Ready? All right, the audience participants, participants and general public should be aware that any or all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. All of some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WIPS or other outlets. The person who wanted a DVD copy of this meeting, so contact WIPS or the Board of Selectmen's Office, a small fee will be charged. All right, before we really get going here, I just want to make sure everybody is at the proper meeting. This is a planning board and not the zoning board. So if you're at the wrong meeting, I do not have the Zoom information on how you find, get there, you'd have to go back to the town website. All right. Has, has Randy joined us?
No.
They don't see him. Okay. Okay, and another thing I asked too is, did everybody mute themselves when they're not speaking? So we don't pick up all your background noise. It's kind of distracting for everybody listening. All right, thank you. And if, when we go proceed down the line, if you have a comment and everything like that, can you state your name and address for the record? Because not everybody has their full name up on the screens. Thank you. All right, the first thing on the agenda is a Form A for 289 East Water Street and Liberty Street. That's map forty, lot two twenty-eight. We do have the application here and everything. It's been received. And I know the members of the board have got a copy from online, at least so you can familiar with the property. So if Kyle, you want to take it away and explain everything?
Yeah, Kyle Gavi representing Kenneth Folsom, who lives at property at East Water Street, which is shown as lot number three on my plan, house number two eighty-nine. Ken Folsom at one time lived out front at the Spear property on East Water Street. Back in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-five, we subdivided that property into lot one and lot two. Ken built a house out onto two eighty-nine. Since that time, he bought a piece of property on Liberty Street. And at this time, we're combining the frontage on Liberty Street with a portion of that parcel, as well as a portion of, of his property at two eighty-nine as, as a retreat lot. The minimum frontage for that retreat lot on Liberty Street would be forty feet. It has sixty-eight feet of frontage. The minimum area for a retreat lot in Rockland is sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty square feet. This lot contains eighty-five thousand, nine eighty-eight. It has excess of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy square feet of contiguous uplands. Both lots do, so both lots would conform to the present, would conform to zoning. You should make a note of that. I'm sorry. And lot number three, which was formerly lot number two, was granted a variance. I think I said that back in nineteen eighty-five for frontage, even though now it actually would conform to the new estate lot. It actually brought it into zone, into zone. So we feel that it conforms to the A and R requirements and does not come under subdivision control.
Okay. Just trying to look at everything here. Charlie, do you have any questions?
I do, while we're looking at it. Can you tell me the house number for the Liberty Street lot, Liberty Street frontage?
Well, there is, there is no house on that showing. It's, it's vacant property. He's actually going to conflag, he's going to convey it to his daughter, who is going to build a house there.
Okay, so I'm looking at it on the map, just so I can see it. So you're talking about the sixty-eight, the sixty-eight feet that's in the area of two twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. And the plan is for one retreat lot, one house?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you have any questions?
I guess my question is, Kyle, they're intending on putting two retreat lots on this piece of property, is that correct?
Well, they're creating one new retreat lot. The Liberty Street lot, which came out of the, a portion of it came out of the house that says Sandra Peppergren, Peppa Join, something to that effect. Can't quite read that. A portion of that came out there and Kenny's combining it with a portion of his property. Back in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-five, we, we took the East Water Street property. At that time, they didn't allow retreat lots in the town. So he got a variance for forty-nine point seven-one foot of frontage on East Water Street. So basically, we're not really changing the house lot he built on, other than we're taking a piece from it and combining it with the Liberty Street parcel.
So basically, you're going to end up with a retreat lot off of East Water Street and a retreat lot off of Liberty Street. End result.
End, yeah, end result, I would say so.
Okay, that answers my question, Mike.
Okay. And both lots will be conforming.
Yeah, they, they both would have in excess of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty square feet. One is five point four-four acres, the other one's one point nine-seven acres.
Will they be accessing them one off of Liberty and one off of East Water?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a driveway now currently on the Liberty Street lot?
Actually, there, there is, there is a driveway. He, he put that in later and it kind of circles down, goes into his house. But his main access is, has always been East Water Street.
Okay.
Do you know off hand, Kyle, if he's going to block off that driveway just further down the road? I know it's going to be in the kind of the same family, but.
Is he going to block the driveway off of?
To connect them both parcels right now, when the house is built.
Yeah, I, I think where the driveway goes down that hill, they're now, because of the limited building area, that it probably would be connected, but we're, we're not, we're not showing any type of a right of way that would allow him to go from over lot four onto lot three. I mean, if somewhere down the line, his daughter sells lot four, he stays at lot three. There's, there's no right of way or easement granted for him to come in from Liberty Street.
Okay. All right, Charlie, John, any more questions?
I'm all set, Mike.
All right.
Yeah, I was just looking at it on the satellite image.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we accept it.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor will go through it again. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Michael, I vote yes. And is Randy has yet, or has he?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so you're all set there, Kyle?
I think if.
I know we have to sign the forms and everything, the plan. So I know you're, if you can get up with Chrissy, maybe it'll be easier if you drop it off at Town Hall and we can all try to swing by and get it back to you.
I have the Mylar.
You already have the Mylar?
Yeah, we have to wait twenty days, right?
No, not on a format.
No, okay.
Right, so I'll have to try to get in touch and get that signed so Kyle can get it back.
Yeah, Chrissy can call me when, when you, when you have an opportunity to sign it.
Good. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you for.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night, members.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the list, we have a site and design review for Gaspar Investments, McKenzie Engineering for Zero Dyer Street. We got map thirty-four lots, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety. So I don't know, I don't know who wants to take the lead on that, since I can't really see it, everybody who's here right now.
Mr. Chair, Walter Sullivan, representing the. With me also is the.
Hold on, Walter, did Kyle leave? Kyle, you're going to shut the mic off? Sorry, Walter, go ahead.
No problem. With me is Brad McKenzie and Eric Schickmeyer from, from McKenzie Engineering. So as you indicated, this is a site and design review. It, the, the premises contains four parcels, two of which are in the R2, and the proposal is for duplexes on those two units. One parcel is in the B1 and the proposal is for seven units. And the other parcel is mixed, and so there's five units for a total of sixteen residential units on these properties. They're at Zero Dyer Street, which is off of South Douglas Street. The applicant proposes to improve Dyer Street, to extend it out to these properties for access. We are currently before the Conservation Commission. And Mr. McKenzie will talk about where we currently are in what we have done and what we propose to do with respect to these parcels. So Brad, if you're available?
Well, I mean, it's hard to.
I'm not sure who needs to. Hey, James, on your iPhone, mute yourself. Sorry about that. But thanks, Walter. For the record, Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group. Walter had mentioned we're before the Conservation Commission. We've yet to have a formal meeting with them. We do have a review letter from Beta for both NOI filings. One would be the duplex that is on the north side of Dyer Street and the other, I'm sorry, the duplex on the south side of Dyer Street. And the other is the, is the multifamily project that is, that is on both lots on both sides of the north and south of Dyer Street, twelve units total. We also have a review letter from, a review from Nova, Henry Nova, who's going to be doing, in the process of doing a stormwater review on behalf of, of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. And of course, we have a review letter from Amory Engineers that were in the process of responding to. That letter is dated November twenty-fourth. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Schumacher to, he'll run through the existing conditions and the proposed site conditions. And then we'll entertain any questions the board may have.
Thanks, Brad. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Schumaker. I'm a project engineer at McKenzie Engineering Group. Do you mind if I screen chair the plan so we can all follow along?
No, please do.
Thanks. So a little background, we were previously in front of the board to file several Form A plans that combines these lots up here, the northern side. So assessors parcel thirty-four lots, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and a portion of Dyer Street, as well as the southern parcel, which combined lot eighty-four and a portion of Dyer Street. So just some background about the existing conditions of the site. We're currently located off Dyer Street at what exists as those combined parcels I mentioned earlier, as well as lot eight thirty-four ninety, as well as thirty-four eighty-three. So the site is currently undeveloped woodland. And we have developed residential properties directly adjacent to the west and to the north. Located to the east, as well as the south is bordering vegetated wetlands. And through this wetlands and woodlands over here at the east, I think it's Union Street, there is some commercial properties. So lots thirty-four eighty-three and thirty-four ninety are located in the residential R2 zoning district. Those combined lots I mentioned earlier are zoned business B1. So in total, those, these four lots totaled to one point eight-three acres and generally slope from a high point, elevation fifty, adjacent to Dyer Street right of way, to about elevation one thirty-eight and the bordering vegetated wetlands. So the, the limit of the wetlands were delineated by environmental consulting and restoration on September fourth, two thousand and nineteen. And they're approved by an order of resource area delineation by the Rockland Conservation Commission on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Moving on to the site layout plan. The proposed development consists of two duplexes in the residential R2 zoning district, as Walter mentioned earlier, and two multifamily buildings in that business B1 zoning district. These multifamily buildings have irregular footprints, but it's all one building on, on both of these lots. Also included will be adding an access roadway off of Dyer Street. So that's Batunus Concrete Access Roadway and some other site infrastructures, such as stormwater detention basins, some parking areas, landscaping, et cetera. So our land usage tables on the bottom right of the plan show compliance with all of the dimensional constraints of those two zoning districts for both the duplex and multifamilies respectively. And these are in allowed use in, in both of, both of the zoning districts. So as Brad mentioned, we're also in the process of addressing some review letters, one being a peer review from Amory Engineers dated November twenty-fourth. And we also received a, two, two review letters from the Conservation Commission and their peer reviewer, Beta Group, dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. So some of those changes that we're currently drafting include widening the roadway. This is now going to be a twenty-four foot wide roadway from South Douglas to the end of the street, as well as removing some of the stormwater outlets that were located in the twenty-five foot buffer to bordering vegetated wetlands and providing some additional parking. Those plans will be provided in the future. So our grading and drainage plan, this is Plan C2. There are currently no stormwater controls in the site. And our goal was to design a drainage system that complied with all the local and state stormwater management regulations, as well as attenuate the peak rate of runoff in the two, ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year storms. So we analyzed the watershed area of about two point one acres consisting of the subject lots to be developed. And our design takes into, into account five design points, being the wetlands, the northern property line, the southwestern property line down here, this little sliver, as well as the western property line in Dyer Street. So we're capturing all impervious runoff from the roadway and buildings on our site with this design. And it's captured by catch basins and conveyed to the proprietary first defense units, one located here, one located here, where it achieves water quality, water quality requirements, as well as remove solids before being outletted into stormwater detention basins located on the site. Portion of the duplex site, as well as multifamily, similar down here, the southern lots. So the, from there, the stormwater gets conveyed into outlet control structures, which are directed at the bordering vegetated wetlands. As I mentioned earlier, these outlets are moved out of the twenty-five foot buffer to bordering vegetated wetlands in our latest plans, our latest design. So the stormwater detention basins were designed to accommodate the peak rates of runoff in the two, ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year storms. And those design points I mentioned earlier, the western property lines, wetlands, northern property lines, we're reducing the flow in this design compared to the existing condition, as the site is currently comprised. Just to mention some utilities, we're proposing underground electric telephone and cable utilities, as well as a sewer connection to the existing manhole located on Dyer Street. There will also be a gas main with services to each building, as well as an eight-inch water main. And we met with the water department to get their input and how they'd like to service connections made of those multifamily buildings. I also got in contact with the fire department this week and I sent them our latest design with that twenty-four foot roadway and did an auto turn analysis to analyze that, the distance it needs to back up. And there's no issues there, so we're waiting to hear back from them. That sums up the site plans. So with that, I'll hand it back to Walter and answer any questions. Thank you.
That's pretty much our presentation for tonight. As the gentleman Brad and Eric noted, we are before the Conservation Commission. And we do have some material that we have to submit to be responsive to Amory's report. But we wanted to let the board, we wanted to come in tonight and let the board know where we are currently.
Okay. John, do you have any comments?
Several, I think. So actually, tonight, you're not looking for approval on anything, you're just updating us.
That's accurate. We still have more material to submit to the board and obviously, we're still before conservation.
All right, so my understanding, maybe Pat Brennan can answer it. Are you, you're still working with him, Pat, as far as updating your requirements?
I, I haven't seen any revised plans, other than what Eric just presented. So I guess I'm waiting at this point for the revised information, the additional information to come in. On this one, it's a little different than most of the ones that I reviewed for you. I talked with Henry Nova prior to performing my review and he had already done a preliminary review for the Conservation Commission. So I really didn't look at the drainage in depth because Henry is doing that. There are some concerns I have with the drainage that I'll, I think I'll wait until I, I see what the revised documents are and how they make out with conservation moving forward, before I get into those. But you know, some of my main concerns, it sounds like they're addressing, which is the width of the roadway, access for emergency vehicles, and some of those things. But like I said, I mean, my letter, I had twenty, oh, twenty-some odd comments that I don't want to bore you with right now. I think I'll wait till I get a revised set of plans and then hopefully we can get those comments down to a more manageable number.
Okay, you said you talked to the fire department about access. How are they going to turn around?
We provided fire truck access easements when being here. Now they're, I revised it today, it's.
All right, they have not kept the updated plans then, as far as their spreading radius and such?
I, yeah, I sent it to Deputy Thomas Heaney this afternoon. And I showed that widened roadway and I showed it using the T hammerhead and turning out of here with no issues.
All right, how about snow removal? Where are we putting the snow?
Our, our latest plans show some snow removal areas in these landscape plans or landscape areas adjacent to the roadway.
All right. You brought up a minute ago that you're going to do your utilities and such underground. How is that going to affect the existing houses that are on Dyer Street now?
I, I believe the only thing, the only way it will affect it now is, I, I thought the water department wanted those houses to have their own service off of a new main, but I, I don't want to speak for them.
All right, you've got electric, electric, gas and such. Are you going to work with the existing homeowners to access them to the underground? Or are they still going to be working off telephone poles?
I, I think that's for the utility company to decide. We, we don't usually get involved with the, with the electric design.
And how about sewer and water? Have you got a commitment from them that they will provide what you need?
Yes, we performed a hydrant flow test and we gave that information to the water department. And earlier this week, I, I did a calculation of the wastewater flow. And I called David Taylor over there at the DPW. So I'm trying to get some information on, on the sewer as well.
All right. I think, Mike, right now, that's pretty much what I got. I'm not comfortable with an awful lot of what they're doing. Again, we've talked about that parking underneath the buildings. I did get an email from Attorney Galvin this morning saying he thought it was okay, but I do want a clarification of that. And talking to the zoning enforcement officer, he said it's not legal. So at some point, we've got to get that clarification made.
Charlie, do you have any comments?
I do, actually, I, I would echo John's points that currently I'm not comfortable with the plan as it's laid out as well. I think I appreciate the update, but until we hear back from Concom and the fire department, you know, I want to know what the swap palace, swap path analysis looks like and so forth. So that's where I stand at it, on it right now.
Okay. Because I, we do have some copies of comments from people, you know, I mean, the fire department, you know, wants a minimum of twenty-four feet. Just echoing with Dave Taylor, just saying. And I guess I have a couple of comments here, I mean, because zoning came back with a couple of things. And I, you have the, I think it's more of the clarification of the multifamily residences opposed to a development. And they were concerned with the parking designs. I know this, you're revamping everything and they need, looking for offsets of the, to the buildings that were shown. And you know, I, I think somewhere in here too is they were concerned about having parking underneath the buildings, whereas it's in a B1 and it's supposed to be commercial. Whereas it's in a B one and it's supposed to be commercial. We'll try to get all this clarified. And we do have um.
Mike, can I ask another question um to Eric? Eric, has the deputy seen this most current plan, do we know?
This planner, the the one I updated earlier showing twenty-four feet roadway.
This one that we're looking at right here, doesn't this show the current, the one that is sharing it? And and you're saying he's seen that?
Yeah, he sent two form Ks, actually, review letter. He requested a twenty foot rep- twenty foot wide roadway. And then he amended his um form to request the twenty-four foot wide after he received um DPWs.
Okay.
Yes, that's at a minimum worth, too.
Yeah, and and to clarify, this this plan is still shows the twenties, so this is not the most updated plan.
Mike, I see there's some people on the chat that have uh questions too. Didn't know if you saw that.
Uh yes, um Patty, and you had a.
Yeah, I do. I live here on not on on Dire Street, going on this map. Now, if um Eric, if you can enlarge this map, starting from. There's two houses on Dire Street, eight and five, that right where, yeah, perfect. If you see right here, you're talking about enlarging the street. There is a ledge rock right in the center. Um be um after the base of the sewer where it drains. In order for them to do any work here, one, my property line lands about four or five, maybe maybe eight feet over. There's not that much room. Pat, they would have to keep coming over my property line and in order to dig, they're gonna have to dig a significant amount. Down to add lines, add piping, which is then gonna impact any structural designs of. The area because know what? There is a ledge there. You can't blast this ledge because it's ledge. You know, I I'm sure you can do some, some bang away at some part of it, but know what? That's still gonna pass over a lot of, that's still gonna disrupt. A hell of a lot of my property right there, going into this whole area where they plan on subletting these sixteen apartments. And vice versa. And then enlarging this line here and then enlarging this street, we're now gonna have to deal with more traffic. And all the other stuff that goes with it, you know, pa- uh obviously parking and the rest of this stuff, I'm sure you've gotten my many emails. But that right there is a main problem, is that rock in my property line. Because you can't get all your construction truck over there without destroying and going over my property. I have issues with that. I've got disabled people in the house, you know, and once they dig, if this gets approved, that's gonna impact that. So I have some real concerns about this, safety, and even the um, even the structure of my house. And the structure of the house around the surrounding areas. These are not high rises. This is not like it's a main street. These are all on a marshland base. And I have some serious issues concerning this. Not only that, we do have wildlife in this area, you know? You know, I see tons of wildlife in here and granted where we, Rockland is doing more and more construction. You know, and wildlife is being pushed aside. What happened to that wildlife? That's another issue that needs to be taken into account, you know, but I I my my concern right now is. See right there where it says driveway, that's my driveway. And all this right here, you you notice the driveways from where they're gonna put this, this twenty-four foot street or whatever. They don't have that much room before they pass over my property. So I have issues and I have concerns about this and I have concerns about the plan. You see this plan here. But the rest of the plan is getting a little bit more in depth. But those are just some of my concerns. I'm not gonna go on and on and on, then I'll just go into a venting fit and nobody wants that. But I did send you a couple of emails on it.
We did receive your email.
I do want you to know that there's a lot of issues going on here. It's just not a matter of just clapping that paper, widening this rock here. There's a big giant rock there, cause that rock is problematic, cause on the base of that rock, that's where everything drains. And they would have to dig a hell, they're talking about digging, digging, gas, you know, sewer connection. That's a lot of construction going over there and where are they getting in? The only way they're getting in is on my property going over.
Alright, thank you, Patty. And I'm sure they'll be addressing all that when they come back with newer plans. Because I'm sure people like every everywhere else in town and across the country, everybody's working from home, so. They're gonna have to put up with people working from home, going in and out. It's a narrow street. I'm sure they're well aware of that. And that'll be taken into consideration. But we do have comments from several people that have emailed in. And. We will keep them on file, so when they come back. When we get newer plans, some of the concerns are addressed. We'll continue, so can uh I get a motion?
What are we looking for the motion for?
We continue to uh.
Will they be ready in March or do they need to go to April?
Can I comment here?
Uh can you say your name and everything?
Grass, George Grass. I live at forty South Douglas, which is right up against Dire Street, which is gonna be where you're widening the road into my yard. I'm at forty South Douglas, the corner of Dire and South Douglas.
Okay.
So they'll be widening the road, they'll be widening into my yard. My question is, South Douglas literally has about eight people that have gas. Is the gas line even big enough to handle another sixteen residents? Cause there is no gas on Dire Street, I don't believe. And I did, there's only six or eight people on South Douglas that actually have gas. I don't believe the gas line will be big enough to handle another sixteen units. Which means they'd have to go all the way back to Rice Ave to get gas.
Does Erica, Walter, Brad, anybody wanna what?
I'll, again, we'll leave that up to the private utility company and and it's a. With gas, it's a, even though it's only a two inch gas main. It doesn't work the same way as say a water main or or a sewer main where in terms of capacity. A two inch gas main is probably a high pressure gas main, which means most likely there is sufficient volume. Um to to provide service to the proposed residents on Dire Street, but again, we'll leave that up to the gas company.
Okay, and then my other, my other concern is that rock formation that Patty had mentioned that. From what I understand, twenty-five years ago, someone tried to do the same project. And that was their big burden is they couldn't get through that rock formation. You know, we all got some pumps in our neighborhood. I don't get water in my basement because of all the stuff I've done to my yard. I've gotten all my, all the yards are sloped away from my house. My some pump keeps up. I haven't had a water issue in several years. You know, we, I've been here twenty years. It took us fifteen years to get a new road and now you want to dig them up again. You know, my concern and everybody's concern is water in our basements. My neighbor across from me, he's got a pool. If you start chis- chiseling away at that rock formation, that his pool could crack. So our our whole concern is the wetlands back there. It's wetlands because there's a lot of water. You're putting all these. These um runoffs in, what happens if the runoff gets overflowed? Where does that water go?
It'll all be addressed in the upcoming edge plans when they get back from conservation and everything else.
But yeah, to widening, to widening Dire Street, you know, I've got a, the neighbor across from me, they've got a fence, so that means you're coming my way. How wide is Dire Street now? You know, cause I'm planning on putting up a new shed this summer or this spring, actually, in a couple of months. And is this gonna in 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 cringe on my property where I can't put up a new shed?
Well, we can't do that. We can't in in encroach onto your property. The the layout is very wide. It's actually fifty feet wide. And the pavement currently is only about eighteen point five feet wide.
Cause I was told I'd be twenty-five feet off the street as it is now. So if you're gonna widen that another six feet, I'm losing six feet of frontage, cause I got frontage on both sides. So if I want to build a shed twenty-five feet off the street and you're gonna widen another eight feet, then my shed's gonna be illegal.
Well, your your shed has to be used, setback from your property line.
Twenty-five feet from the street.
Uh gi- give or take. Give or take how accurate it is.
That would be twenty-five feet from your property line, not the street.
Correct, so if they're gonna widen the street, doesn't that widen the property line?
Your property line is pretty much cast in stone there. I don't think they can, unless they make an agreement with you to buy your property. I don't think they can do anything with it. Uh Tony Riley, you're uh Tony Riley, you're on there. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, that's right. I the, they can't do anything on anyone's property. Mister McKenzie is correct that the street in actuality is much wider than it may appear on the ground. Um and your property lines don't move uh if if streets get widened. Uh they are what they are, you know, based on these plans and everyone's, you know, documents on record, so. Uh they can't do anything on anyone's property.
You actually have two front yards at at number forty, Mister Grass, so so the setback on South Douglas and Dire is fifty feet on both up. Twenty-five feet off both streets.
Correct, and I'm I'm trying to build a new shed.
Yeah, but that would be on the property line.
The location of the roadway won't have anything to do with, will dictate the location of your proposed shed. It's the setback from the property.
Okay.
Okay. Um so can I? Do you, people think you'll be ready for the next uh next meeting or?
Which is when?
Uh March twenty-third.
Thank you, Chrissy.
I I think so, yes. I think we're probably, we're looking at resubmitting within the next week.
Um I'd like to add something. This is Mary Lutz, thirty-two South Douglas. I would just echo what um my neighbors have said regarding the concerns about the water, the ledge, as well as the widening of the street into our property. Um we are the um the ones that have the in-ground pool and in fact, we um replaced the. The liner this summer, so we have pictures of the um of the walls of our pool that were quite intact then. So um we're concerned about the removal of the ledge and the effect on um the pool as well as um the foundation of our homes and other homes in the area. And um also um the comments that have been made by others.
Yeah, thank you. Um since, I know you're still a little ways off, but maybe the developer will come by and. Do some videotaping prior to construction, so that way everything will be documented. If that would be acceptable to them.
That's acceptable, and if there's any removal of ledge that involves um say. Hole ramming with a backhoe or or blasting, which we hope is not the case, we'll have to do a pre, a pre-construction survey anyways, so there's no, there's no issue. And looking at all the properties along Dire Street prior to construction.
Thank you. So you think you might be ready for the March meeting?
We do.
Okay, now we'll put you on the, on the, put you down for, and if for some reason that um. You're not gonna make it, just let us know and we'll push you back and push you back to the next meeting.
Which will be April twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Alright, so can I get a motion to uh continue? Zero Dire Street?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second now.
Yeah, we have a first and a second, and we'll go through it again. Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Um Michael, I, yes, so, alright, we'll see you um, we'll see everybody back next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night. Alright. Uh next on the agenda, gender is uh the site and design for uh Cresco. On uh ten fifteen Hingham Street, that's mapped for a lot, eleven. I don't know, um. Okay, Phil. Right, whoever you are on my screen, I saw you.
Thank you. Should I, should I proceed?
Yes.
Awesome, thanks so much. Uh my name is Phil Silverman. I'm from the law firm of Vicente Cedarburg and I'm representing Cresco tonight. Uh Cresco's here for site plan review. This is a co-located medical marijuana dispensary and adult use marijuana retail establishment. Project. Uh it would be for, again, Cresco, it's doing business as Sunnyside, that's the name of the. The actual establishment and it's at ten fifteen Hingham Street. Uh property is in the H one Industrial Park Hotel Zoning District, which is an appropriate district for this type of a use. Uh within the zoning ordinance, it's not within three hundred feet of schools, daycares and the other types of uh similar uses. Uh that are set forth as buffers in the zoning uh ordinance. Um just, I'm gonna turn it over to Christian Fakara from the company and he'll walk you through uh the project and the company a little bit. I I will mention just uh as an introductory remark. Cresco is a multi-state operator. They hold uh twenty-nine retail or different types of marijuana licenses in six states. Uh they also operate uh both a cultivation, product manufacturing and retail facility in Fall River. Uh they are, quite frankly, one of the most successful uh marijuana uh operators in the country right now. Um really, more so than just about anybody else I can think of. Uh they've done this very well. And uh I think uh I'll just turn it over to Christian and let him tell you a little bit more. Go ahead, Christian.
Thanks, Phil, and uh good evening, Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Uh again, my name is Christian Fakara. I'm Vice President of Government Affairs for Cresco Labs. Uh just to kick it off, Mister Chairman, would it be okay if I shared my screen for the presentation?
Yes.
Great, give me one second here. Can you see that, Mister Chairman?
Yep.
Okay, um well, let me uh start by thanking you in advance for your time this evening and appreciate you uh allowing us the opportunity to provide some detailed plans. For our proposal here today. Um to this point, we've been working closely with the town and have had some really productive conversations with the Board of Selectmen. ZBA, uh where we've had some really positive feedback that we've incorporated into this plan. Uh so it goes without saying that we're really excited to uh to be in Rockland. We're eager to get situated. Uh serve the residents, create good jobs and ultimately provide a benefit to the community. Um so I'd like to just kick it off with a bit of background about the project. Uh as you can see, we're proposing a five thousand and eight square foot medical and adult use uh cannabis retail facility. It'll have twenty-three parking spaces and it'll be located at ten fifteen Hingham Street. And that's at the northeast corner of Commerce and Hingham. Uh the project will create about thirty new local full-time jobs and we anticipate it's gonna generate roughly one point four million in annual tax revenue. Uh furthermore, we expect it uh to generate roughly one point two million in ancillary and uh ancillary business and build out costs. Um for the project itself. Uh so with that, what I'd like to do is turn it back to Phil, who's gonna introduce our civil engineer uh for the project, Don Bracken. To talk about the existing and future plans on the site.
Sure, uh so so we'll just go right over to Don. Don is the civil engineer. I know he's been working uh previously on behalf of the property owner. Uh with the various boards in town, so so we'll turn it to him. And Christian, why don't you give him the next slide and then he can direct you when to, when to go from slide to slide from there. Go ahead, Don.
Okay, uh thank you. Good to see everybody again. Uh last time we were in front of the planning board was in July and August. And we received uh design review and site plan approval in August, uh subject to conditions. Um which would satisfy those conditions uh through these uh plan revisions and shown on this latest plan. Uh pretty much, it's the same set of plans that we're. Uh, pretty much it's the same set of plans that were reviewed before. So I'll, I'll, I'll basically go through them and just uh, highlight, highlight the changes from what you've already reviewed. Uh, the existing conditions plan, the the major change on this sheet was the location of the FEMA flood zone uh, on the property. Uh, you know, since since our meetings, uh, we applied to FEMA for a letter of map amendment to get the property out of the flood zone based on the technical information that we submitted, uh, which we were, were successful in doing that. So uh, that's reflected on, on this existing conditions plan. Um, other than that, it's, it's the same as what you reviewed before. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, on, on this plan, there were some minor revisions, uh, since, since we were before you. We went in front of the Conservation Commission. Uh, had another peer review uh, through them uh, for drainage and landscaping and so forth. We had some minor minor changes uh, on this with grades and vegetation. Um, and that was pretty much about it. Um, we also incorporated a condition from the DPW uh, to uh, provide uh, granite curbing along the existing roadway across our frontage, which is now reflected on, on this plan. Uh, we've also uh, updated the zoning uh, summary or the parking summary in the upper left-hand corner. Uh, we haven't changed the parking lot configuration or the number of parking spaces. It's still at twenty-three. Um, the, our original approval was for all retail, um, which required, I believe, twenty-one spaces at that time. Uh, when, for this submission, we revised the application uh, to conform with the floor plans that have been submitted. And there's actually a reduction in the number of spaces required uh, per the zoning code to fifteen. Uh, we also have been, well, this, this use has been in front of the zoning board of appeals and we, and received a special permit um, to point out, one of the conditions uh, that was on the permit was the driveway on the north side uh, onto Hingham Street. Uh, that, that, the condition was that there would be a right turn out only. Um, in that uh, this use would be reevaluated uh, by the ZBA uh, in six months after opening. Um, if you recall our initial submission, we did have a traffic consultant uh, provide a report. Uh, we didn't feel that there should be any restrictions on uh, access in or out at, at that location. Uh, given the fact that uh, we have satellites to, to the west and another satellites to the east. Um, that would, that we felt would allow adequate access in and out of the site from that point. You probably also recall, there was a lot of discussion at the last meetings on having a secondary access uh, going to the abutting property to the south at one thousand one Cambridge Street. Uh, that property has a driveway uh, that um, accesses a, a signalized intersection at Hingham Street, thereby allowing people the option to exit and go to the, go to the lights uh, if, if they wanted to, depending on which direction that they were going in. Uh, this plan shows the uh, uh, the limit of the easement to allow that all to happen. And we'll get to that, I think, further in the slides in, in a little more detail. Um, if go to the next slide, please. Uh, grading utility plans. I know that Mister Brennan has reviewed this. Uh, since the last uh, go around, we've added more details for the water and the sewer um, in order to get their approvals, uh, which were received. Uh, we made some slight changes to the drainage um, system that I believe Mister Brennan approved. Uh, I, I, one comment uh, that came up in the engineering report was to add a note at the entrance uh, distinguishing where the slope granite ended and vertical granite began. Which we would know.
Listening in.
So the uh, the uh, the other condition, now that we're looking at this plan, that came up with the zoning board, which we will add to the final set of plans is they requested that a solid fence be installed along the easterly property line so that uh, people could not cross properties and the, the abbot would not have any concerns about people parking in their parking lot uh, to come over to use this property. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the uh, turning analysis uh, that we submitted for the, for the fire trucks to demonstrate that uh, they can get in and out of the, out of the site um, for, for access and firefighting purposes. Um, next slide, please. This is a, another one, uh, same, same turning analysis showing the, the vehicle coming from a different direction. Uh, next one, please. Uh, this is a pretty detailed lighting plan. I think you, in your packets that was submitted by Cresco with a uh, detailed specifications for the lighting. Um, you can see uh, the foot candles uh, on, on the plan highlighted in yellow are, are where there are, there are no foot candles or there's no oversplash of the lighting. Uh, this shows that, you know, the parking lots and around the buildings uh, will be properly lit. Uh, next slide, please. This is the easement plan that I was referring to. Uh, this, uh, this has been recorded at the registry, so it has been documented. Uh, this shows it a little clearer, clearer than the previous plan. But it uh, shows how it connects to that uh, existing driveway at one thousand one Hingham Street allows access to the signalized intersection. Uh, next.
Uh, okay. I'll take it from here, Don.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I wanna talk a little bit about traffic and parking. Uh, as, as Mister Bracken mentioned, we've got twenty-three spaces on this site. And we've done a lot of uh, review, particularly with um, the ZBA previously on some of the traffic and parking issues here uh, to try to come up with, with something that works for you. Next slide, please. So um, we, we presented a traffic review letter. Uh, shows the arrival distribution, sixty percent of the traffic coming from east, forty percent from the west. And then there were some chip, trip generation numbers uh, that are, are provided, really comes out of the Institute of Traffic Engineers showing it at peak weekday hour, you'd see fifty-four entering, fifty-five exiting. At peak Saturday, ninety-two entering, ninety-one exiting. I, I will be honest with you. Uh, my, my firm, uh, I work for a firm called Vicente Cedarburg, where a national law firm that only does marijuana represent actually about a hundred clients in Massachusetts. So uh, we, we know a little bit more maybe than the Institute of Traffic Engineers do on these, on these types of numbers. These are pretty high. Um, but, but the, the bottom line here uh, with respect to this site is that it can handle this type of traffic. We've got twenty-three spaces. Those are all for customers. No employee parking here. That's all done off-site. And what we are able to do at this site is we can turn over customers basically once every seven to ten minutes. Uh, for purposes of this analysis, I would tell you, use twelve minutes that, that we turn them over. That means each space turns over five times in an hour. So those twenty-three spaces can actually handle about a hundred and fifteen cars. Uh, so we'll have no problem handling even at a peak of ninety-two entering, again, which would make this one of the, probably the most, well, second most uh, populated dispensaries in Massachusetts. So we could handle it, uh, given our parking. Um, and and as it mentions here, this is about what you would see. It's, it's, it's less than half of what a coffee shop with a drive-through window generates. So we don't expect uh, the, a great deal of problem handling that with the parking that we have. Um, next slide, please. So uh, again, early on, uh, we reached out to uh, the police department a- as a part of the permitting process, the special permit. Got this letter uh, which, which was very thoughtful and said, you know, looking at the situation, uh, there were two suggestions made and they actually gave us options. They said either one, you know, when you're exiting for, on Hingham Street, make that right turn only. Alternatively, they said make the, make a way to exit through the back of the property so that you can go out to the signalized intersection at Hingham Street and Commerce Street. To try to accommodate this, we actually did both. We, so we have agreed that there is uh, only right turn only out of the, the main entrance on Hingham Street and we do have access uh, access through the rear of the property out to uh, the Commerce Road and Hingham Street intersection uh, which, which we think is gonna help uh, relieve traffic quite a bit. What, what we eventually came to decide, uh, you know, with the uh, CBA was that with respect to the, the access uh, and egress on Hingham Street, our main point of access and egress, we're gonna look at that in six months. I know there was concern in the community. How's that gonna work? Are there gonna be issues? Some people wanted to potentially restrict uh, cars from turning left into there. And what we agreed to do is take a look at this six months from now and give the company an opportunity uh, to, to handle the traffic. Uh, most significantly, uh, just you know, by way of information about this industry, what happens with a lot of customers um, in the marijuana industry is they check out the company's website before they get there. A lot of them will do online ordering before they get there. Others just wanna see what the products are so that, that when they show up, they know what they wanna get. But everybody uses these websites and what we are going to, we're gonna basically try to direct traffic and explain to people the options they have and probably try to use access even through that Commerce Street um, and Hingham Street uh, access point uh, and try to encourage that as well. Um, and, and we'll also, um, I'm, I'm gonna get to, you know, be doing some other things in terms of teaching people how to use this uh, facility. One, one of the things that we do uh, when we open uh, this facility, and in fact, it's part of the special permit, is we have what's called an opening day or a thirty-day plan uh, for opening. And so we will have, for the first thirty days of operation, we will have parking attendants in the lot and they'll be encouraging people about which exit to use. Um, and, and basically helping people understand where to park uh, at all times. We also would be opening with a police detail for a period of time, which would be somewhat at the discretion of the police chief. Um, what we found more recently, uh, you know, you've probably seen this. I know that uh, you've now have several that have opened within the town. Uh, there used to be crowds uh, for these dispensaries when they opened, early in the days of legalization of marijuana. You don't really see that anymore. The openings are not uh, you know, crowd, the, the curiosity factor is gone. Uh, so we don't anticipate that. And generally what we've done is, you know, we, we reach out uh, to the police chief after we're open for about a week and say, do, do you think we still need the police details? Uh, and the answer has generally been no. Uh, we, we've even operated on an appointment-only basis at times uh, for a limited period of time, just to get people used to accessing the, the facility. And again, what we are told by the local police chiefs within a short period of time is, you, you know, you don't really need to do that anymore. Uh, we can see that, that there, we're not gonna be seeing the traffic and the crowds uh, that we have seen before. Last thing I wanna touch on um, is uh, traffic. I know there was a a, a peer review that was done uh, on behalf of the town by Gillan and Associates and um, you know, they, they did, we filed a response. Um, basically, there's agreement on just about everything. Um, you know, that, that was said in the peer review. The only issue, I think, where there's a, a bit of a distinction relates to a suggestion at the end of the peer review that, that we should operate appointment only, which you know, I, I think would be a bit of a, a competitive disadvantage a- a- among, you know, being operationally difficult. I, if we could call, I think we have uh, Mister Skelly from Fussin' O'Neill, who I, who I'd like to actually ask us to speak to that comment uh, for a moment if possible. Matthew?
Sure, yes. Uh, hello, everyone. Um, my name, for the record, Matthew Skelly. I'm a registered civil engineer uh, at Fussin' O'Neill. Our office is in Quincy. Um, so yeah, just like uh, Attorney Silverman said, I'm, I, I'm not, I, I'm not sure. He left too much for me to a- add to there. He did a great job of explaining everything um, that we've written here and, you know, most importantly, yes, agreed uh, with his take that uh, Mister Gillen, you know, didn't, didn't seem to find any uh, any significant, um, you know, bones to pick in, in what we had to say. Um, regarding specifically the uh, appointment only, um, I, you know, based on the, the volumes um, that, you know, we were, were seeing on, on Hingham Street. Uh, this is, this is really like a, a drop in the bucket here, the, the traffic that would be generated by this facility. And, and yeah, um, totally agree. I, I don't see any reason that this would need to um, operate at uh, by appointment only. And to be honest, I've actually, we're, we're in the process of working with a, a dispensary in Newton, Mass. right now. Um, that is uh, actually, some of their appointment-only system is causing them more backups uh, than it's actually saving. They get people staying in the parking lot for longer. Um, and, and it hasn't served the purpose that it was intended to. So um, yeah, we would, we would certainly um, agree that, you know, the, the appointment-only restriction um, i- is not necessary here. Uh, and, and I'll be sticking around if there are other questions.
Great. Um, let me turn it back to Christian then, uh, to, to finish up with some of the other uh, details of the project.
Great. Thanks, Phil. Um, so I'd like to turn to uh, some of the key exterior elements of the project, starting with signage. All of our signage is gonna be uh, discreet. It's gonna be purpose for awayfinding only. And that goes without saying, signs are gonna be compliant with all the municipal codes and ordinances across the board. Uh, and no signs, printed materials or advertising products are gonna feature logos, symbols or images of cannabis. These are renderings of signage and elevations as described in our application. This is the north elevation um, and the frontage view. This is our uh, prototypical signage. Uh, they're facelit LED channel letters identical to what we have at other uh, other retail locations. This is just the side elevation. And here is a detailed measurement of the signage on both the north and the east side. Moving on to the project's interior plans. Uh, I wanna start with the floor layout. Um, and I'm not gonna make you read all this. I'm not gonna read it verbatim, but uh, just wanna highlight some key points. Customers are gonna have access to designated portions of the facility. That includes the secure entry area. Uh, the general sales floor where their point-of-sale terminals, customer restrooms, and then the exit area. And here's a rendering of the floor plan. As you can see, there's a secure entry area and a large sales floor to ensure the facility can accommodate all of our customers and prevent any queuing outside, which is super important. Uh, and it's gonna also allow for comfortable social distancing. On a facility operations, our facilities um, have pretty strict and extensive operational protocols. Um, just to name a few, again, I don't wanna just uh, read this verbatim, but there aren't gonna be any unpackaged cannabis products in the store, no consumption on the premises. We have a no loiter, loitering policy and we're debit card compatible for cashless transactions as well. Um, and when product leaves the store, it's sealed in packaging, just like it would be at a pharmacy. And here's a description of our customer pickup protocols. Customers have to create a profile to Phil's point earlier about using websites. They have to uh, create a profile and select a location on our website. Uh, after logging in, they can place their order and receive a confirmation email or text. And when they get to uh, the site, they'll be able to meet with a Cresco employee, let them know they have an online order. Uh, the employee will then scan all items into a POS system and places all the product into the bag. They'll confirm the order, complete the transaction, staple the bag shut with a receipt and they'll be on their way. I wanna transition quickly uh, to some important property protocols uh, that'll be used to safely and securely maintain the facility. Let's start with trash. Uh, all waste-containing cannabis products will be stored securely within our vault. Uh, that waste will be picked up from the dispensary and returned to our licensed cultivation facility where it'll be destroyed. And that's in compliance with all regulations set forth by the CCC. Uh, waste that doesn't contain product uh, will be stored in the dumpster to the rear of the building and picked up by a commercial trash vendor. And as far as loading is concerned, product deliveries are gonna occur two to three times each week in an unmarked transport van. There'll be no advertising or branding indicating the vehicle is being used to transport cannabis routes and times uh, for the transport, transport are randomized. And uh, two agents, at least two agents will staff the vehicles transporting the product. One agent will remain in the vehicle at all times. The other will be accompanied by staff into the facility and through the receiving area. Within eight hours of the arrival, Sunnyside will weigh the inventory and account for all of it on video, ensuring all the products have been received. And then finally, an armored car service will pick up the monetary instruments as needed each week. And that is a great segue um, to safety and security. Uh, which is obviously the utmost priority for our customers, for our employees and our vendors. Uh, and obviously crucial, crucial to our, to our operations. We'll have over forty-five interior and exterior cameras on site. We'll have over 45 interior and exterior cameras on site, 24/7 online access for regulators and law enforcement. And all cannabis products in the store will be in a secure vault and tracked from the time it enters until the time it leaves. And finally, here's a letter of support from the Rockland Police Department expressing their support for our security plan. Just for your knowledge, some of our first phone calls, when we're looking at potential sites and locations, are with the local chiefs of police and fire to ensure we have their buy-in and support for our plans and are tailor-made to what they think is the most appropriate. So I'm proud to say we've worked closely with them up until this point and we remain in close, close working collaboration relations. And I'm happy to turn it over at this point for any questions you may have. And we have a number of our experts here on the line with regard to any of the key elements from the proposal here.
All right. Pat, do you have any comments?
Sure, a couple. Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers, the board's peer review engineer, submitted a letter to the board back in December. Not really many comments with the site because it's essentially the same site that you guys approved last year. The only thing that I would note, Mr. Bracken mentioned that my comment about the transition between the curbing he's taken care of. The one thing that I would note is that the two waivers that you granted for the last site plan are still required for this one. One is for the use of the high-density polyethylene drainage pipe and the other is for the subsurface infiltration system. And as you're aware, those are typical waivers that the board gives out on these private sites when there's not a lot of room. Just to, I guess I got a question. The zoning board decision restricted it to right turn out on a Hingham Street. Is it right turn in only as well from Hingham Street?
No, no, that was not a part of it. That was what they specifically said. Let's look at that in six months. That was under consideration, but they wanted to give us the opportunity to operate and see if that wouldn't be, if that would be unnecessary.
Okay, so the site driveway at Hingham Street will have traffic exiting in, exiting right only and then entering from each direction.
Correct.
If necessary. Okay, I just wanted clarification on that. And then, you know, based on the discussion tonight and, you know, Mr. Gillen's report about the recommendation and it was just a recommendation for the the appointment only. He's reviewed the other dispensary projects in town and he's made that same recommendation on all of them. So it's just, it's a, it's pretty much a standard recommendation that he makes with Mr. Silverman's presentation where, you know, turnover at most 12 minutes per. Then I would agree with him that they have sufficient parking with the 23 spaces. I believe the easement allows for 10 spaces on the abutting property for the employees. So I think that's, that's about all I had for comments.
Thanks, Pat. Charlie, do you have any comments?
I do. So they said that they're, the employees are going to park offsite. Where are they parking?
So actually, right now, we're looking at a couple of sites. There's a possibility it'll be over, there's a nearby park and ride, but we're also looking at some private lots within the area, in which case we would shuttle back and forth for employees. It's not going to be in the immediate near area or on the street or anything like that. We're going to find a preferably a private lot offsite.
Okay. That doesn't sound very practical, but I guess I understand it. And also in regards to, because I was a big proponent of the right turn only coming out and exiting from 10, 1001 Hingham Street. So I see the easement, but we've seen no correspondence with that building owner or the management company that handles that building that says that they're going to be okay with that. I would not be in favor of it until I've seen some sort of documentation from the building owner and the management company of 1001 Hingham Street saying that they agree with the easement and that they're okay with it. I've walked this site now several times and it is going to be extremely tight when you have vehicles parked in 1001 Hingham Street and trying to exit from 1015 Hingham Street. I mean, it's going to be extremely tight in there. So I would say that I'm going to need to see some documentation from them and for me to feel comfortable with that.
I believe, Christian, you'll correct me. I believe our landlord is the same landlord as next door. I know we've had those discussions. We may have even executed the document. Is that correct, Christian?
That's correct. I believe we have Grace Kenny on the line who is intimately involved with that. Grace, can you shed any light onto that?
Yes, actually, Jim Rader, our landlord, is on the line right now and can speak on behalf of the connection between 1001 and 1015 Hingham.
Yeah, we have a executed easement agreement. That easement agreement corresponds to Don Bracken's plan, which he showed earlier in his slides. And that easement has been recorded at the registry deeds.
So we can, we can provide that?
Absolutely. Yep. But it is, it is, it is on record. It's a matter of public record and it is, it does encumber 1001 Hingham Street, which is the the office building parcel.
Charlie, if I can say something, I do have a copy of that in my office. Unfortunately, for the last three, four weeks, I have not been in the office for medical reasons. But there is a copy of that, but they apparently it was not forwarded to the planning board. It was forwarded to the building department.
Okay.
I have seen it. I'll probably see if I can get Michelle to get a copy of it as well.
Okay, just, just as long as we get that into the.
Yep.
Yeah, I do have a copy of it. It was recorded, you know, back in December.
Okay, and Mr. Rader, as the property manager or building owner there, you are okay with that operation?
Absolutely. That, that concept has been part of our plans from almost the get-go to have a, it was really kind of belt and suspenders as a second way to, to, to not have to exit on Rockland. If somebody, on 228, if somebody wants to go to the traffic light, we gave them that option.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Charlie, for now?
I don't. I have my fingers crossed. I mean, considering what happened over the weekend with our other dispensary. I do have extreme traffic concerns and hopefully we'll be able to address them.
John, do you have any questions?
I do. Talking about offsite parking, that's against the zoning bylaws in the town of Rockland. Have you got a special permit from the ZBA for that?
Well, we don't have that at this time. But I guess if we have to come back and disclose further how we're going to handle that, happy to do that.
I also have some very serious concerns about exiting onto Hingham Street. And if you look at the letter from the fire department, they're requiring you to exit back through Commerce Road. All traffic to exit parking lot by the lights of Hingham Street and Commerce Road.
Yeah, sure.
If you go back to the, if you go back to the original site plan review, that was one of the requirements that the planning board put in, that you had to exit, and that's why we insisted on the agreement from Mr. Rader.
If I, if I could respond to that. And Don Bracken, please chime in, but the original permit granted by both CPA and the planning board has two-way access in and out of the curb cut off 228. There's no restriction on the original planning board approval or the ZPA special permit or the ZPA permit that requires the traffic to do anything but ingress and egress off Route 228.
That's correct. I would agree.
Chrissy, do you have the decision from the planning board when we okayed the building itself?
Not with me, no.
Okay, I'd have to, I want to double check that because I'm reasonably certain that we made that stipulation.
That is my recollection of it as well.
And well, I would prefer to see appointment only, but if your figures say that it doesn't have to be necessary, then I could probably go along with that. But those two things, the offsite parking has got to be cleared up from what I can see, as well as the exit on to, through the traffic lights at Commerce Road and Hingham Street.
Understood.
If I could address the parking, technically, based on the bylaw, we have more parking than is required under the bylaw. I think the offer to shuttle employees would just be an added benefit in, you know, to make sure that they would, that all parking demands were met. So I don't think technically there would be any requirement for any kind of special permit or variance for the parking.
Other than it's the town bylaw that there's no offsite parking. Now, if the zoning board wants to go with it, that's their property. But I think that's probably going to come up some point. That the requirement is that there's no offsite parking unless there's a special permit for it.
No, we, we understand. It's sort of a preference, I think. We can, we can park people at the site, but I think that's not the best option here. We can park employees at the site, but that's not the best option, even though it does meet zoning because we have 23 and the requirement is 15. I think we're providing a better option to you than than what is otherwise required.
Well, I guess my question would be, I mean, I want to believe that that's out of the kindness of your heart, but obviously it's probably because you have concerns about the traffic as well.
I'll be honest with you. I don't have concerns about the traffic. We try to do the best job we can because we know the boards have concerns. The, you're going to have, this would be your third dispensary. I think you may even have a possibility of a fourth in Rockland. We're going to be spreading out the number of people that come to these places. So I'm not particularly concerned about it, but we, listen, we did understand and know that the board would be concerned, and that's why we tried to sort of accommodate in this fashion, just so that there was no question whatsoever that we would have plenty of customer parking.
Okay, but from a, from a practicality sense, you have employees. I mean, do you think that employees are going to want to be shuttled from wherever they're parking to back and forth? That becomes, I'm sure it becomes a logistical nightmare for you folks and it becomes a hazard or not a hazard, but a hassle for any potential employee.
Look, there are, the marijuana industry is pretty unique and there are sometimes some sacrifices you need to make in order to accommodate. My sense is that as, as you see this roll out, we're going to find out that the parking problems are really overstated and there aren't any parking problems, but I hear you. You know, I don't, if we have to deal with an operational issue and shuttle people back and forth, that's a business decision that we're willing to make. And but, but I'm just, I'm not trying to deny what you're saying, that it's not, you know, it's not the easiest situation to handle, but we, we understand that you have to make some sacrifices in this industry.
Charlie, let me jump in too. I just want to let you know that we actually have that shuttle program at three of our retail dispensaries already. This is part of the deal sometimes, if it means a more efficient and expedited operation for our customers. We don't want any queuing. We don't want lines. We want people to feel comfortable and have quality social distancing in space when they come and patron our stores. So, so that's just part of the deal and it's not foreign to us.
Okay. I mean, you have to understand also where we're coming from, where we do have one dispensary up and running and they've been top-notch, but we have seen the issues that we're currently discussing. We have seen traffic issues. We have seen traffic flow issues. We have seen parking issues. We've seen complaints from other abutting, abutters saying, hey, these people are using our parking lots and yada, yada, yada. I mean, I can see it now. They'll be parking in the Home Depot parking lot and they'll be walking across through the Wendy's and up over the grass and into there. So that's what we're trying to prevent.
Hundred percent.
We're trying to diligence for the town.
Real quick, not to prolong it, but one of my colleagues, Abe Jamal, our director of security is on the line, who does a lot of the logistics for programs like this. Abe, are you available to chime in?
Yeah, for the record, my name is Abe Jamal, the director of security for Cresco Labs. I oversee all security operations for the retail division. I can assure you guys that to put some of this at ease, when we do a lot of these things, we look at it from an emergency management standpoint. And we've taken consideration of, you know, the risk allocated with lines and so forth. And, you know, not to say that any of our competitors do, but we, we truly go through it with a fine-tooth comb. And we've really streamlined our internal processes so we don't have, you know, excess lines. You know, for, for some who might, you know, want to, you know, we've taken a stroll over to our Fall River dispensary. You know, a line to us is 10 people or more, you know, and that's, that's, that's a bit much for us. So like I said, we really streamline our processes. We really take a look at things through a fine-tooth comb, so we don't have these issues. We want to be the exemplary neighbor.
Yeah, Mr. Williams, we really, we do take your comments to heart and understand sort of the need to handle this. I would mention to you, right now, there's about 97 retail establishments in Massachusetts. By the time this one were to get open, which is probably, I hate telling my clients this because they always want to be open tomorrow, but it's probably 12 months from now at the soonest. You'll probably see twice that number, about 200 retailers. The, you're going to be spreading the consumers. It is my earnest hope for my client that they continue to draw in lots and lots of consumers to this facility. But I think what you're going to see is a lot of the surrounding communities are also going to be opening these retailers very soon. And so some of the traffic issues will be alleviated, but obviously, you know, we've got to take care and be a good neighbor, make sure they're not trafficking, parking in the nearby lots and do the best we can to alleviate those concerns. So we appreciate your thoughts on that.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. We received the letter, I'm sure you, I'm assuming you did too, from the fire department that they reviewed the most recent plans. And you addressed some of the stuff on there, the master box, knock box, all those things. The items that you didn't, not on the current plans, your sweep path analysis for the truck, which was approved earlier, and the deputy says that he's going to be driving through the parking lot prior to signing off on the occupancy. And he has another comment, all traffic should exit via the lights of Hingham Street and Commerce Road, which is going through the easement. And one of my questions is, since everybody else has revised plans and everything like that, when is the planning board getting a set?
We will get you those plans immediately.
Mike, can I ask you, have you been able to go over the packing as far as the requirements, the 300 square feet per, or one space per 300 square feet? I don't have any plans on that. And is that what you're referring to?
Well, a new set of plans, like all our parking spaces were based on the size of the building.
You know? I think we supply, the only thing that may not be on your plans, if I understand, Mr. Bracken can, can correct me. The only issue is there's a fence that I think is supposed to be separating this from an abutting property. But I think otherwise, the plans that we provided are the most recent ones available.
The last set of plans I received back in August.
No, our filing with this, I think two months ago, we filed new plans.
Yeah, Mike, the plans that I reviewed were November 23rd, 23rd, 2020.
Yeah.
Those are the latest.
But those are the ones that Chrissy had forwarded to me.
Online or actual paper?
Those are the ones you dropped off, Phil?
Yeah, I dropped off multiple copies, hard copies.
And that included all the adjustments that dawned me that you would talk about earlier?
Yeah, the only thing that I think isn't in there, as I said, is there is a fence between the properties, but everything else is in there.
All Pat's concerned that Pat had the granite curbing and everything, because I'm like, I don't have that on my plans.
Well, we haven't updated the plans to address the Well, we haven't updated the plans to address the special permit, which was just a fence. And Patrick's comments, generally, we wouldn't update our plans until after this meeting, until we get all the comments, and then we'll, we'll do a full revision.
So we're happy to do that for you.
But, but the grant, but the granite curbing is on the plant.
Yeah, the, the official set of plans, we've addressed, we believe, all the comments and conditions from the one that you referred to, Mr. Corbett, in, in August.
Yeah, and, and the curbing comment was, it, it isn't a big deal. It's just to delineate between where the vertical granite curbing stops, the vertical granite curbing's along Hingham Street, and I assume along the radius coming in until you hit the property line. And then it's slope granite curbing coming in from there. But it's just not, it's just not real clear. Not that it's a big deal, but it's just not real clear.
We, as I said, we can provide any, any updates, you know, when this meeting ends. And, and I'm, I'm hearing, as I mentioned, the fence, and we'll take a look at anything else that you, that you mentioned. We're happy to update.
Right, because Chrissy, when was the last time we, did, do we have those planned at town hall for the most part?
Yeah, they were emailed, and then there was a hard copy. I didn't know if the ones that, the things Dawn was discussing were implemented in the Cresco package.
Okay. On the plans you have, Chrissy, or maybe Mr. Silverman can answer. Does it have the square footage of the interior so that we can actually do some calculating on the parking? The plans I have do not show any dimensions.
The, the plans we had were, we based parking on the existing, on the sides of the building, basically, because they didn't have a tenant.
At five thousand eight square feet, I think.
Yeah, you, I mean, I saw the, the PDF package I was submitted to the planning board had the architectural floor plans in it.
Yeah, and if you look at, if you look at sheet three on the plan set, if, if you have the November twenty-third plan set, right on the building, it says it's five thousand eight square feet, and then in the zoning summary in the upper left, right below that, there's a parking summary. And they, they detail how many spaces they need, and that's where they said they need the fifteen spaces based on what Mr. Bracken said earlier this evening.
Well, Chrissy, if I can get a copy of those, I'd like to look them over. And, Mr. Chairman, I think I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting. Do we have a chance to, one, have them update everything so that we've got a final set of plans? And that as long as we get them a couple of weeks prior to the meeting, we can look it over and then probably approve it the following, at the March meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
I will second that.
Okay, I know we have a question. I, I don't know off the top of my head. How far away is this dispensary located from where the Primrose School is gonna, would like to move into?
Yeah, that was my question as well.
I don't have that calculation. We did a calculation of the abutters within three hundred feet, and no pre-existing schools showed up. That is the buffer, so.
I don't think it's going to matter if the marijuana goes in first. They have preference over it. If the school was there, then they'd have to take that into consideration.
Correct.
Am I right, Attorney Riley?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Did I know somebody asked that? I don't know off the top of my head.
I, I can report back to you tomorrow.
I, I'm saying it's more than that, but I don't, I don't know if it's a fact.
I'm pretty sure it is, Mike.
Yes. Right, that's, that is, there's, before we do the official vote, does anybody else have any comments? All right, so we have a first and a second on the motion to continue, so they can get us a new set of plans with the couple of things on it, and we can review it and have them back in, in March. Right? Is, is that all right with you guys? Is March good enough?
Sure, I mean, it, the next available date is, is fine.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second. We'll go through it again. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes, and I would like to thank the, the group for the questions getting answered as well.
All right, Michael, I vote yes. All right, thank you, guys, and sorry about that, because I'm looking around, and that's the only set of plans I have.
We'll make sure you, we'll make sure you get exactly what you need. No problem. Thank you.
All right, and we'll see you next month.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Thanks, guys. All right. All right, next on the agenda for us is approved a minute from the January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
I make a motion to approve them.
And I second it.
There we have the first and the second. We'll go through it. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Michael, yes. All right, we have an invoice here to pay Gillian Associates in the amount of one thousand five hundred twenty dollars for the traffic study for ten fifteen Hingham Street. We have money in the account?
Yes.
So can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Michael, yes. All right, we have another bill to pay in re-engineering in the amount of two hundred twenty-two dollars for the plan review for ten fifteen Hingham Street.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Michael, you vote yes. All right, one of the best parts of the night, motion to pay the secretary.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. We'll go through it. Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Michael, yes. All right. Upcoming activity. Oh, boy, where do we begin? All right, somewhere along the line, we are going to have to hear do another vote for the FEMA emergency management there that we did before. This has to be done before town meeting. Has to be advertised. So we have to squeeze that in somewhere and do that. Try to get everybody on board that needs to participate in and explain everything. So we might, we might have to hold a separate meeting with everything being crammed in here. And also before town meeting, we're supposed to get some paperwork sometime in the near future about the proposed overlay district. That'll have to be advertised. So we can get that on the agenda for town meeting. And I believe next month, we're going to have three sixty-five Concord Street. They submitted everything. And so they'll be coming before us. We're going to have to do a little house, housekeeping, getting in touch with the people at Dexter Road, just to do a little housekeeping. We approved the roadway back, back a couple of months ago. Or a year ago, I don't even remember. We approved the roadway, but they have to actually technically form a the property before that can proceed. And I know we're going to have another form A coming up. I don't know when, but somebody did get in touch with us. The other day I spoke to him, and they had, they were getting everything in order, so they should be dropping that off at town hall, I would imagine, within the week. So it'll be coming before us next month for another form, form A.
Primrose School coming up as well.
That's right. Assuming they're still on the agenda.
Chrissy, did you talk to him? Is he waiting for?
They didn't have a quorum the last ConCon meeting, so they would have been here tonight, but they weren't able to meet.
So we're just waiting for them to get ConCon done?
Yes.
Mike, I'll see if I can get ahold of Jennifer tomorrow and get the changes of the bylaws and such for that overlay district and see if we can get it out to everybody within a day or two.
All right, I know the, yeah, she said she was going to get it to me. It was supposed to be in last week.
I'm running a little bit slow in getting things done, but I'll get ahold of her tomorrow.
She did, she called me before the end of the day today, and she was working on something that should have tomorrow. I don't know if it's FEMA or if it's the overlay. We'll have to see what tomorrow brings.
With every, with everything going on, you know, everything, everything gets screwed up and delayed. But do you have anything, Charlie?
I do not. I don't think. Let me just give me a second. I don't think so. I wish I did.
I said, I think we have enough, enough on the plate coming up. Right, right, you got nothing else, John, right?
Oh, I do not.
Glad John's back. That's the most important thing.
That's the important thing right there. Right, that's, that's about everything that's been coming in, right, Chrissy?
Yeah.
No, they're not. I don't think so. I don't know. Let me see. I think they're still waiting on questions and stuff. They cleared, they cleared the chat, so they must have answered the question.
Yeah. Oh, that's twice, ooh, ten more minutes.
That's right.
They have the question about the Primrose School.
Oh.
Yes. I was going to say, wait a minute, I think that's the same name.
Sorry. Whoops.
We did ask the question.
Yes, we did ask the question, and we believe it's more than the three hundred feet that's required, but off the top of my head.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize for that. I lost my connection. I, I, I'm sorry. That was, it was, it was just, it was just a, it was just a thought when it came up, and I, I'm like, oh, let me, let, let me just run it up and make sure that you guys, I'm sure you guys knew it and, and would look at it. Great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Yep.
All right, if nobody's got anything else, I guess we'll call, call it a night.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And I second that.
And we'll do it again. John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Mike, I vote yes. All right. Everybody have a good night. Thank you, Chrissy.
Good night.
John, you did better.
Thank you.
Everybody stay safe.
Good enough. Bye now.
Good night.